Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, how is everybody?
Good.
All right, we're gonna get started. Sorry I'm a couple minutes late. Hope everybody's here. Want to welcome everybody to the Vernon Township MUA meeting for October 21st, 2021. Statement of compliance pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this regular meeting has been provided to the public and the press on January 20th, 2021, by delivering to the press such notice and posting the same at the municipal building and filed with the office of the township clerk. Everybody rise for the... ...pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I guess... We'll do a roll call.
Okay. Mike Fury.
Here.
Dave McDermott.
Here.
Andy Pittsger.
Here.
Kristen Wheaton.
Present.
Scott Galway.
Here.
And Paul Carney is absent tonight. For professionals, we have John L. Bright, the administrator, Rich Wanner, the MUA attorney, Steve Bonosky, the engineer, and myself, Jaclyn McCabe, the recording secretary.
Now, I don't have the agenda in front of me. I guess next up is make a motion to go into closed session.
Correct, for the purpose of litigation.
Yes. Thank you.
Motion to go into executive session for litigation.
Second it.
Just for the record, I'm sorry, Mike, just for the record, that's involving SCUMA. And that was recently filed, just so the broker is clear.
All right, thanks, Rich, sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
All right, motion by Andy Pickers, seconded by Dave McDermott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, we're gonna jump into the other meeting.
We just need to, really quick before we go over, if we can just do a roll call.
Yes. Mike Fury.
Yes.
Dave McDermott.
Yes.
Andy Pittsger.
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
Scott Galway.
Yes.
Before we move in, I've noticed that Brian Tipton has his hand raised.
He's asking for the link, I'm gonna send him the link right now for executive.
Okay, very good, that's what it is, very good, thank you, so we'll see on the other side.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I was on mute.
That's okay.
I'm having problems. I keep on losing the agenda. If I if I get, you know, lose the agenda, if you could just get me back on track, I appreciate it.
Of course.
All right, I think we have everybody on. Steve Banowski is back on. Danell, you're on, right?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Okay, we'll make a motion to reconvene.
I'll make a motion reconvene. Regular meeting.
Second that.
So a motion by Dave McDermott, seconded by Andy Pittsger. Roll call.
Mike Fury.
Yes.
Dave McDermott.
Here.
Andy Pittsger.
Here.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
Scott Galway.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to authorize our attorney to Brian Tipton to pursue an appeal of the recent litigation, the judgment on the on the litigation with SCUMA. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Was it Kristen?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry. It's a motion by Kristen Wheaton, seconded by Dave McDermott. Roll call.
Mike Fury.
Yes.
Dave McDermott.
Yes.
Andy Pittsger.
Abstain.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
Scott Galway.
Yes.
Okay. All. Entertain a motion to open meeting to the public for agenda items only.
Yes.
Motion to to enter into public session for agenda items only.
Second that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, I do have Jesse Palladini raising her hand.
Go ahead, Jesse.
I just have to take her off. There we go.
Um, I just want a clarification of the vote just now, please. Um. What was the vote for the appeal?
There was.
Voted yes.
It was, you want a clarification of what the vote was for, Ms. Palladini?
No, no, no. It was to appeal the, yes, the judge's ruling. I want the roll call. I know Andy Pittsger abstained, but I don't know others than that. It went too quickly.
Okay, Mike Fury said yes, so did Dave McDermott, Andy Pittsger abstained, Kristen Wheaton, yes, and Scott Galway, yes.
Okay, um, is Mike Fury permitted to vote on that, being a member of the council as well?
Yes.
Okay, if you say so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
All right.
Anybody else, Jackie?
No.
Any emails?
I have no emails or any other correspondence.
Okay, we'll make a motion to close to the public.
Motion to close to public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to number seven, approval of bills, resolution 21-50. Approval of bills. Everybody haven't have an opportunity to look at the bills list? Any questions, concerns?
Danell, I guess the only question is on the return of the panels or maybe Jackie. What was was that a 10 or 15% of restocking charge?
I'm unaware of what the percentage of the restocking charge was for.
Okay.
However, because it wasn't one of their stock items, that's why we were charged the restocking fee.
Yeah, I figured we were going to get hit, but we got hit pretty healthfully, so pretty heavily, so.
They did. They only charged us for one, one shipping fee.
One shipping fee. Okay, good. All right, thank you. Motion to approve. Check to see if there's any other questions.
Any other questions? Do I entertain a motion to approve the bills list, uh, resolution 21-50?
Motion to approve bills list, resolution 21-50.
Second that motion.
A motion by Andy Pittsger, seconded by Dave McDermott. Roll call, please.
Mike Fury.
Yes.
Dave McDermott.
Yes.
Andy Pittsger.
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
And Scott Galway.
Yes.
Okay, number eight, approval of minutes for September 16th, 2021. Everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes from 9:16, 2021. Any questions or concern? And if not, can we entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 16th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kristen Wheaton, seconded by Andy Pittsger. Roll call.
Mike Fury.
Yes.
Dave McDermott.
Yes.
Andy Pittsger.
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
Scott Galway.
Yes.
Number nine, resolution 21-51, agreement between the VT MUA and the Commission, Commissioner of Transportation for the design and construction of Route 94 Pleasant Valley Drive to Maple Grange Road. Danell, can you give a background on this?
I'm sure. I'm actually going to pitch it over to Steve because Steve has a little more engineering explanation for this, but basically we're the the stages asked us to go ahead and approve the resolution in order for them to do work in the future in these areas. Steve, I don't know if you want to give some a little more detail.
Sure. So there is a couple of different parts to the agreement, I guess you can say, but generally speaking, the DOT is planning a project on Route 94. Based on information we have so far, we are not anticipating impacts to the VT MUA facilities, pipes, manholes, et cetera. But that is to be determined by the DOT's engineer. And essentially, this agreement allows for the, you know, the bottom line is the agreement allows for the VT and 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 the DOT has a very formal process on how they handle these utilities, how they get the utility company involved, how the, you know, all this works. And this agreement kind of sets forth that pro, uh, sets forth that process. And the bottom line is that this allows for the VT MUA to get paid for their, you know, essentially their time associated with this project.
Thanks, Steve. And any questions about this resolution? If I don't have any questions or concerns, anybody want to entertain a motion to pass resolution 21-51?
Motion to approve resolution 21-51.
I'll second it.
Motion by Andy Pittsger, seconded by Dave McDermott. Roll call.
Fury.
Yes.
Dave McDermott.
Yes.
Andy Pittsger.
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
Scott Galway.
Yes.
Thanks. Resolution 21-52, EDU allocation for H&amp;H Plaza. I guess, Danell, that would also be for Steve to explain, or maybe you can explain.
No, yeah, I can quickly explain this. So, um, this was for the American Deli. This has been around, obviously, at H&amp;H for the past few years. They had sent in an application back, I believe it was the end of 2019, beginning of 2020. We did receive an engineering report from our former engineer at the time, but it was never brought before the board to, you know, allocate those EDUs that were already reviewed by the engineer. So this is just doing that formal process that we can update those EDUs to be where they should be to include the new restaurant.
Have they been paying for those EDUs since?
They have not.
What have they been paying?
They've been paying for, I believe it was a retail space beforehand.
Okay.
And the only, the only way we caught it, just to let you know, so the only way we caught it was that somebody had come in and they were asking questions about how it was allocated. So when we pulled the paperwork, I was going through and I realized that the deli was So when we pulled the paperwork, I was going through and I realized that the deli was not on there, which is why we started doing some more research and we, you know, realized that it was not being, there was never an allocation for the correct EDUs back at the beginning of 2020, and I think it had to do with the transition of the former executive director and then not having anyone, you know, in the office.
An oversight.
Yeah.
And is that, I assume the owner is completely aware of this now?
The owner, um, the owner was aware that they, we had sent all the correct calculation for EDUs to them, so they were aware of what they were. We have not reached, did we? Jackie, did we reach out to him? Can you unmute yourself?
Muted.
I can hear you in the other room.
Yeah, sorry. We were waiting to bring it before.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm assuming once we, once we decide on this, then we'll notify the
Yeah.
the owner.
That just brings up to the next question, just because this is one, and then we have another one with H&amp;H Plaza for the salon. Is that also in process or done?
No, the salon does not need additional EDU allocation.
Okay, all right. So this one did. Do you know what it went up from?
Was it on my, hold on for one second, I can bring it up. Sorry, I'm just bringing up the 27 and 94. It's just another half EDU. I wasn't sure if it was 11.25 or 11.5. Yeah, 11.5 right now.
Okay.
All right.
Good.
So any, any other questions? Or I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 21-52 for ED, EDU allocation for H&amp;H Plaza.
Make a motion. Give a resolution 21-52.
I'll second it.
So a motion by Kristen Wheaton, seconded by Andy Pittsger. Roll call.
Mike Fury.
Yes.
Dave McDermott.
Yes.
Andy Pittsger.
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
Scott Galway.
Yes.
Moving on to resolution 21-53, the application to New Jersey Natural Resource Conservation Program. Danell, can you give us a little background on that?
Yeah, sure. So this is just our application for soil erosion and the sediment control plan that we need in order to move forward for the pump station to replacement. So we just need this application to be signed. So this resolution authorizes Mike to sign that as the chairman.
That means I have to come there and sign it.
You have to come here and sign it, yes.
That's what I gotta do. I got.
I'll make a motion that the chairman has to get up and go out and get there.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second that.
I knew you would. I knew you would second that, Andy. Motion by Dave McDermott, seconded by Andy Pittsger. Roll call.
Mike Fury.
Yes, I'll try my best.
Dave McDermott.
Yes.
Andy Pittsger.
Absolutely, yes.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
And Scott Galway.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, what? Yeah, sorry, Mike. Um, do we have to do this for every permit, or can we give you permission on a on an ongoing basis to sign these instead of?
That's a great question.
That's a good question. Rich, can we, can we pass a resolution that just authorizes the chairman at any time to to sign permits as needed?
Uh, yes, but it would just be upon the recommendation of Steve or someone from his firm. So, yes, you can do a global resolution. And I do that, frankly, in my other municipality for will serve letters. So that's fine.
Do we want to make a decision right now?
Up for the next meeting and then just and have it have it kids to go. So it'd just be a resolution authorizing the chair to endorse permits upon the because really a ministerial act at that point upon the recommendation of the, of the VTMUA engineer. And then upon confirmation, obviously, that fees or anything else have been paid.
Rich, just for clarification, any fallout when making a decision like that?
No, no, it's, as I said, it's, it's at its core, a ministerial act, the, the execution of it. So Mike's not exercising any independent judgment. He's, he'll be acting based upon the recommendation of the engineer. So.
I'm good.
Yeah. So, so essentially, we're going to just table this and then till we make a minor update of this, or do we pass this one?
Oh, we passed, we just passed what we passed, but Rich is going to address something for the future.
All right, I'm sorry. Thank you, Kristen. I appreciate that clarification. Okay, roll call.
No, no roll call. We just had a roll call.
We did have a roll call. Thank you for reminding me that. Oh, look at that. Yeah, I have to get up and go sign that. That's right. Thank you for reminding that.
My pleasure.
Yeah.
Well, I'll send you a text afterwards.
Yeah, please do. Please do. Please do. Remind me what I gotta do. So, number 10, administrators update.
I got nothing. Just kidding. I'm just kidding. Um, so, uh, Dewberry did upload the environmental planning document for IBANK. I actually just gave it approval today. We had some issues on where it was being uploaded with IBANK, and they fixed all that, so that's good. So we're just going to be awaiting review and approval of the, of that. The sewer service area mapping, I did reach out to Dewberry about setting up the dates that now that we finally have a state designated town center, we can move, move forward and redo the maps and reevaluate the areas for requests for expansion based on what the current sewer service area is right now. So that's, that's on its way. Capital items, we obviously attached our capital item list. Two big things to update. One, we did have Ray from North Jersey Pumps install the control panels earlier this week. I'm sure Howie can probably comment on that during his report. And we also did receive quotes to put together, I'm sorry, we did receive quotes that were put together by the DPW. Actually, I asked them to do it to save us some money to do the repairs at Pump Station 3 on the building there. The building's really aged, to say the least. So we're going to be moving forward on that week, that next week to get a purchase order in place so we can move forward with purchasing the supplies for that and get moving on that.
Danell, could
Yeah.
On the, on pump station two, what are we actually going to do for renovation of that building?
Pump Station 3?
Yes, sorry.
Right, so, uh, so we're looking to, there's some holes on the sides of the building that are we've covered up, so animals can't get in and stuff. We're looking to hopefully re-side that. But, you know, we're not, we're not sure what it's going to look like underneath the existing siding that's there. So we are, you know, hoping for the best, preparing for the worst on any, you know, on any infrastructure on the inside of the building that might have to be replaced.
Yeah, I mean, this has been on our list of capital improvements because it is, it's a dilapidated mess, and I'm hoping what you're trying to do here is not just patch it with a couple pieces of plywood and hope for the best, but we're going to dig into making sure it's a stable structure here.
Yeah, definitely stable, and I also think it's important, you know, to look a little presentable. You know, the condos are right, right behind it, and people have to look at that every day. So I think, you know, it's, it's a benefit to have it look a little bit better than it does right now.
Yeah, and aesthetically, we've talked about this as part of the project list and capital, capital funds where they're set aside to do that. So I'm happy to hear that. I just want to make sure we're doing it right and not just patching holes.
Right.
Okay.
Um, so we did have a second meeting with, or I should say, like, probably a fifth or sixth meeting now with Mountain Creek. So we, they've made the decision that they are not going to, they're not going to ask to expand water to fit their future needs. They're going to address that when the time comes, which is fine. So the town's going to be moving forward with the plan to just meet its own needs. We did meet with Aqua. They do not have wells in Highland Lakes, as was previously relayed to us. So they do have some wells that are a short distance from the Legends property. So if at any point that does get, you know, developed at some point, that might be a possibility in the future. I'm not, not quite sure. They have to get some more information to us about that. Corey Stoner, the township engineer, is going to be reaching out to SUEZ to discuss their agreement and kind of have a smaller meeting to, to get some of the details together before we put together a final agreement with them. And that's pretty much it on the water. Other than James did put together a timeline for the project, and Dewberry was appointed as a special engineer for this project by the township, so the township can handle that. I did start working on the 2022 budget. We received the estimated SCUMA billing for next year, and it's over a 3% increase. That's not, that's just their operations expenses. It's not our, our bond payment expenses. Those are obviously set. The bond payment expense next, expense next year is the same million dollars that it was this year, but we are seeing a 3% increase in their operations.
I, Danell, this is Mike. Is that typical every year?
They, um, they have large increases every year, yes.
So that's, that's relatively small for them.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, 3% increase, I don't like to see that because you know, the township is limited to 2% on certain things on operations. So I don't like, it's, it gets a little frustrating. I mean, every county entity has the ability to fully collect on everything. So so it's, it's almost like that, you know, we have to pay the full amount. It doesn't change. It doesn't change. If they do 3%, they do 3%. If they do 5%, we do 5%. So that's what we're stuck with.
Okay.
So hopefully, I would like to have a draft budget by the middle of next month for 2022. And then the one thing I want to discuss with the board is about moving to hybrid meetings. Either at the next meeting or the meeting after that, whenever the board sees fit, as well as if the board would like to continue doing two meetings a month or go back to one meeting per month. I think we need motions on both of those. If, if we want to move back into a hybrid meeting or a full live meeting rather than just hybrid, as well as one or two meetings a month.
Let's, let's tackle the one meeting per month first. Danell, I know you reached out to everybody individually. I, I, in my opinion, on the one meeting a month, I think this MUAs operating very efficiently and, and well. And we, we made that decision a while ago because we wanted to make sure we get, get it back on track. I think, in my opinion, one meeting a month is, is more than adequate for this MUAs now that we're running very efficiently. So that's, that's at least my opinion. I like to hear from everybody individually. Scott?
Um, I've only been coming to meetings for a few months now, Mike, but I, I think that if everybody's in agreement for one meeting, I, I'm on board with one meeting as well. My only concern with that sometimes, Mike, is, sorry, is that, will, will that slow down any of our progress that we've made on certain projects because we're, we're only meeting every four weeks to discuss where we need to be? But I guess if we communicate via email, I think we should be okay then, right?
Well, well, one of the things we have to be careful of, of is, you know, we have to discuss meeting in this meeting, and rather than then back and forth by email, we have to be careful of that. But that's a good point, Scott, that you bring up about slowing. We don't, I don't think the purpose is to slow anything down, but we don't want to do that. But that's, that's a good point that you're bringing up. Andy, do you have it? You have an opinion on one a month, one a month? What do you think?
I mean, I've said that I'm okay with one a month. My only issue, and I know I can trust Danell and Jackie to keep this on board, but these projects, as Scott has said, I agree with him. This is imperative that we go with that. So these project updates and any hiccups, I'm ready to jump into another meeting if we need to, but I'm willing to give it a try because I think we've got really good people in place, you know, Danell, Jackie, Howie, and the crew. I mean, they're getting it done. Steve and Dewberry, we hired you guys, and as we said, stay on the ball, stay on, keep the focus. And if we come to these project meetings and things are falling apart, please inform us before they do. That's kind of where I'm at. Okay? I'm good with that.
All right, thanks, Andy. Kristen?
Um, I, I agree with the foregoing. So, um, yeah, I, I think we need them at the extra meetings at the beginning of the year. And, and, yeah, I feel like we're in a good place now. So I'm, I'm fine with one a month and, you know, it's called a special meeting or if, if necessary.
Good. Dave?
I'm fine with it. No problem. And if we have, if we have a hiccup or something, we can always have a special meeting for that alone. So I don't see any problem going back a month.
Right, all right, good. So, Danell, do we have to make a motion to, with the, how do we have to handle this, Danell?
Um, I believe that you should make a motion because we do have, we do have scheduled meetings, so I would, I would prefer that we do make a motion to move back to the one.
Yes, and you have to think it was going to be the, what Thursday is going to be.
Right, so I believe, I believe that November 18th is the next one in November. I don't know, what, what are the two dates in December, Jackie, that we could decide right now which one's going to be?
Pull that up.
Leave is the 16th.
It is.
So probably makes sense. Yeah, so we should probably leave at December 16th, and the one before that we'll, we'll be canceling, and then we'll, then we'll move to you know, more, more formal schedules starting in January. So I'll, anybody, I want to take a motion to go to, to move to one meeting a month.
I'll second that motion.
I guess you, I had, I guess you had the motion to.
No, Dave, Dave made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll be the second.
All right, Dave, Dave McDermott made the motion, seconded by Andy Pittsger. Roll call.
Mike Fury.
Yes.
Dave McDermott.
Yes.
Andy Pittsger.
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton.
Yes.
Scott Galway.
Yes.
Okay, the other question that Danell just brought up is to move to the hybrid meeting. At least from my experience, and Andy can probably talk about the same, the town council did go back to a hybrid meeting. There's two screens that are located in the municipal building, and I thought it went fairly well. It's, it's a mix between hybrid and in person. And I think if we follow the lead of, of the town council and follow the same rules, those rules are, it's optional. You can, you can dial in through Zoom, or you can go in person. That's, that's one of the options. And then the other is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, is it's is a mandatory, mandatory, in person, there's a mandatory mask wearing unless you're, unless you're speaking, unless you're speaking from the public or speaking as a member or a professional or any, any staff members. So that's, that's my understanding of what the rules are. Did I miss anything, Danell?
No.
The other thing.
Pretty good.
Yeah, the other thing, Mike, is just so everybody's aware is that you are positioned six feet apart. Uh, the seating on the dais or at the tables, we have the, that was all laid out, and then, um, I think that covers it. And, and even the seating for the public is six feet apart. That's it.
Any, any questions about that? So, want to take a motion to go to hybrid meetings, and that would be for the November 18th meeting?
Uh, just a clarification, Mike. Are we saying that as commissioners, we can attend either way by either hybrid or at the dais in the chambers?
Or are we? That, that is what, yeah, that is what I prefer. I prefer the, as a member, you have an option to dial in through Zoom or be there in person.
Okay, and that goes for professionals as well?
Correct, correct. Professionals and the staff, that, that, that goes for everybody, right across the board.
Yeah, I think it's good for the professionals so they don't have to incur travel costs.
Right.
Okay.
So I want to entertain a motion to go, go, go back to the hybrid meeting?
I'll make the motion to entertain going back to a hybrid. I'll make the motion to entertain going back to a hybrid meetings.
I'll second it.
Motion by Andy Pitsker, uh, seconded by Dave McDermott. Roll call.
Mike Perry?
Yes.
Dave McDermott?
Yes.
Andy Pitsker?
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton?
Yes.
And Scott Galley.
Yes.
All right. All right. So going back to Danell, I, I had a couple of questions for Danell. Di- Di- Danell, uh, the, the first question. Are you making contact with Suez? Are you able to, uh, contact somebody to set up a, a meetings in the future? I, I believe I was talking to James. He was having problems getting in touch with somebody from Suez.
Um, I know, so I spoke with Corey. Corey and I spoke on the phone about this after, um, we met with Aqua. And he said that he would reach out to them directly. Um, I have not tried to reach out to them for a few months. And when, and I can tell you a few months ago, when I tried to reach out to them, they didn't get back to me. Um, so. I mean, I can try again, uh, but I was, I did, Corey said that he was going to, um. But I'll touch base with Corey again.
Just so you know, uh, uh, Danell, uh, John Hildebrand is the regional manager for the, for the Highlands, this area. I'll get, I'll get you his con- just remind me to get his contact information to you. So you can call him. I think he's the, he's the point of contact. He's the one that's in charge of the whole area. And, um, he's the, he's the regional manager. He's, and then he'll get the engineers involved. So wh- whoever's gonna be the engineer.
And Danell, to let you know, we've left a couple messages with John Hildebrand.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I'll, what I'll do too, just I'll follow up to myself because I know John personally. So I'll, I'll, I'll call him and try to. Get him, you know, once we, once we're ready to, to, to move forward with them and we have, you know, we want to establish something, I'll, I'll try to reach out to him too. So. And the other, the other question, Danell, another follow-up and it's, this is going back to the sewer service area and I, I need clarification on this. The, the town center designation, we expanded the town center, right? That was approved, right?
Yes.
Do we still, do we still have to redo the map and then go back to the DEP and get it approved by the, by, by the DEP?
So, okay, so, um, with the town center expansion, um, that was approved by the state. According to the regulations that the DEP sent me, it would be that everything is in town center would be, would be a sewer service, a sewer service area. Right? So our existing mapping that, that maps out what the current sewer service area is will change because of that town center designation. Um, that's the first part of that. The second part of that, um, has to do with our expanded areas. So the town center designation does not. Our originally requested expanded areas, two portions of those. Areas on the far ends of the map, um, on the far ends of 94, I should say, are not in the town center. So if we did want to expand to those two areas, we would need approval from the DEP for those two areas.
So to, just to follow up, uh, and then the, the Route 94 corridor, which is, uh, right by the Dairy Queen. Um, that area that, that is approved now in the sewer service area?
I will double check the mapping, um, but I believe that it is. I believe that it expanded into that area, but I know it did not include, um, there's like three lots that are next to Wings. Those are still not included. So they did do some like picking and choosing which lots were and were not. Um, but I will, I will get an updated map from Jessica. Caldwell, the plan for the township. And, and I'll share that with everyone. So you all have, um, you're all aware.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thanks. Thanks, Danell. I appreciate that. All right. Any, any other questions for, for Danell before we move on to 11?
Yeah, I just had one, Mike. You know, you have mentioned that James put together a timeline for the project. Is that available anywhere for us?
Um, yeah, I thought that I had sent it to everybody, but I will double check and I'll send that again.
It's, uh, no, it, it's okay. If you say it's. I'll just go grab it from the email. Thank you.
Yeah, but I know there's been some issues with emails coming back and forth. And I'm, I'm not even sure if I had that attachment.
Okay.
Don't see it.
Yeah, if you could send that out to everybody, that'd be, that'd be great. Any other questions for Danell? All right. Good. We're gonna move on to 11, the license operator report. Howie, you're on.
Yes. Okay. Pump station one. The only improvement there that the guys did was that they did clean the easement. They mowed and we walked the easement all the way to the PAL. Station two, nothing going on there. Pump station three, to add to Danell and Andy's question about the, uh, renovation. What Scott did was he came out and gave us a quote. Basically what's happening in that quote is from the top down. He's gonna, he put in for a roof, for, um, shingles. He put in for two by fours. He put in for siding, windows and a new door. Not a double door, just a single door. Big enough to get a generator in and out if we have to.
Good.
But what, like, what he did put in extra floors, the two by fours for that back wall. Where we get water runoff from, uh, the hill in the back, just in case we open that up and, uh. Expose the whole two by fours being rotten, so we can replace them.
Are we doing any insulating of the building as well, Howie?
The inside is fairly new.
Okay.
That's, uh, that was all done, inside was all done with sheet rock.
Yeah.
Probably about eight years ago, when I was in there, we did the whole inside, gutted it and put new in.
Now to avoid some of the problems we've had with the siding riding out, especially at the base, are we gonna gutter this? So we can take liters away from the, they'll take the water away from the building?
Yes, we, well, there is a temporary gutter that myself and Jacqueline on there. Well, yes, we fixed that just to keep the water from coming in on us there.
Yeah. Uh, so do we have a quote for putting in gutters after all this is done? So we can protect our investment?
I don't think he put that in for gutters. No.
Okay. If you could check into that, that might be something we could look into.
Yes, we could add that in there.
Thank you, sir.
Howie, who's doing that work?
Well, I had one of the, uh, one of my workers from DPW, Scott Moore.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, good.
Yeah, he used to do it for a living.
Oh, good.
So is he doing this on contract or as a DPW worker?
Uh, DPW employee.
Okay.
Yes.
And I believe Howie, did he say he needed like two guys or one, one guy?
Well, he said he definitely needed a guy to help him, but I told him Monday, Wednesday and Friday, we have Zach and Matt there to help him as well.
Okay.
You know, if he needed it, it's there.
All right. Good. A- anything else, Howie?
Yes, uh, lift stations are running good. Um, as Danell said, Ray did come out and do two panels. He's gotta come back next week. And install the rest of them.
How, how many, how many more does he have?
Two more.
Two more? Okay.
Yeah, he did lot to cat and brandy wine.
Okay.
So he has Stonehill Steamboat to, uh, finish up on.
That should set us up for the winter then, right?
Yes, according to him, yes, he said that that's, uh, his panels are cold weather panels. There's no, uh. Mirror in there to default for the cold weather like we used to have. He did away with the blue car leader.
And, and he, he's gonna get that done by what, like mid-November? End of November?
Yeah, next week he's coming back to finish them.
Oh, good, good. No, good job.
But, uh.
Anything else, Howie?
Yeah, we had a couple of calls, callouts, uh, two of them that were callouts to us, but it ended up being on the interior. Then we had a call out for Keystone. Which is, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that is, that's at the very top of our system in the condos. We came in there the first time, they snaked it, got it out. Uh, second time we got called for in 24 hours for the same thing. I told them to go up there this time with the snake in the camera. Uh, pond scene that in there with the camera, our cleanout was broke right at the, uh, bottom. So they had to come in and repair it that night. They fixed it and did a whole new cleanout. Uh, Jackie, I seen the pictures today. I should have sent you them so you could put on here for everybody to see. But, and the DEP was calling, we had a small, uh, just a minor spill, maybe 20 gallons at the most came out of it. But that's it.
And you got it, and you got a case number, Howie, then you closed it out. Everything was fine.
You got a case number on here, yes.
Did the DEP contact you?
Yes. Yeah, Jen.
Who was it, by the way?
I couldn't. Yeah.
Jen Gerdak?
Yeah, that was the one who contacted. I wasn't sure if it was Gorlick or Gar- Gardak. But yeah.
Jennifer Gerdak. All right. Good. Good job, Howie. Anything else?
That's it.
Any, any questions for Howie on the licensed operator update?
Project list looks good, Howie. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks, Howie. Appreciate it. Next, next on the agenda is engineer report. What, uh, Steve Benoski?
Yeah. Uh, hang on a second. Let me, uh, open that up here. Um, the pump station two. Uh, we, we see, hang on, let me open this up. So I'll make sure I'm following the list. Sorry about that. I had it right here and now it's gone. Uh, here it is. So pump station two, we got the NJDEP treatment works approval, which is, uh, a big hurdle up, I would say. Um, so that was good. To, uh, I was happy to receive that. Um, Mike is signing up on the solar erosion permit, which should be, um. Usually is a, a, a pretty quick and easy permit to obtain. Uh, borings were performed. Uh, one boring was performed at the location of the, uh, wet well, which is like, uh, uh, I forget the exact depth. It's like a 20 foot deep excavation. So we always want to present with the contractor, the subsurface soil conditions. And then we also, um. Performed a boring at the, uh, location of the building. They're only like, you know. Uh, 15 feet apart. So they're relatively close together. So those borings were performed at the end of, uh, back in September. Um, favorable results in the borings as far as, uh, you know, lack of stone and rock and a. Relatively, uh, you know, low, uh, deep, I guess I should say, really, uh, groundwater with, um. Observe. So both, both positive things. Um. So for environmental planning document, uh, for the I-Bank process, we did, uh, Danell hit on that a little bit. We did hit a little snafu there with. We had submitted it weeks ago and then, um, we had followed up a few times and, you know. I'm still not sure what happened on that, but essentially it was uploaded to the wrong. Portal and they didn't know it was there. So we kind of had to re-upload it just, uh, in the last few days, but that's, uh, in progress. Um, asset management plan. I guess I should have followed up the, uh, or, or any questions on pump station two before I move on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have a question, Steve. Um, is, is the next, next logical step to, to, uh, uh, draft, uh, bids? Uh, specifications on it for, to go out the bid?
Yep. So, uh, this week, um, this week, yeah, I think it was this week. Uh, I got, you know, so basically. Uh, we'll probably, you know, I know it's probably been a while since MUA went out for a construction contract quite like this. Um, I'm not sure if the township has recently or not. Um. So, but. A lot of the, uh, contractual language forms, et cetera. Are really dictated by, uh, by I-Bank, right? Um, so this week I received, um, all those forms and contractual language and all those items from, from I-Bank. I'll share those with you, Danell. So, so we just got those this week. So we'll start putting that together.
I'm sorry. So it was a whole long thing, Andy. So the timeline is if we get that bid document out. It's possible to get it out by. Uh, mid-November. Receive bids. No, no. Am I, am I wrong on that timeframe?
No, unfortunately not, because we're, we're in the, uh, I-Bank review process now. And, and basically the timeline is being dictated by I-Bank at this point.
I, I talk about the, the environmental planning document.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, that has to be approved and then you, then you can go out the bid?
And then they review our bid documents and then we go out the bid.
All right. So you're obvious, so you, you're, you're, you have to wait for the DEP to tell you to do certain things.
Yeah.
There's a certain, um, period in there too, before we go out to bid where we need to pass a bond ordinance. And I've already been in contact on the town side and I've already been, been in contact with, um. Bond council for the township on when that happens. So they're aware, um, you know, they get updates from I-Bank as well. So.
All right. That's.
Yeah, there's a few, and there's like two more hurdles to get through on I-Bank first, unfortunately.
All right. That's good. Andy had a question?
Yeah, on, um, ID line 15, permit review and approvals.
Yeah.
Uh, a completion date of 10/26. How are we sitting on that?
10/26. So that was really, uh, that one was really aimed at the main one, the T, and the TWA permit. Um, so as far as that goes, we, we beat it as far as that goes. Um.
How do I tell from this chart here what's been completed and what's still? In progress?
Yeah, yeah. Good, good question, Andy. We can, um. Provide a format change to this to, uh, make that easily discernible.
Yeah, I mean, whether it's another column that says in progress or what the, the status is would be appreciated, Steve.
Good point. Thank you. We'll do.
Trying to follow up through on this.
Yeah. Uh, uh, I can recognize how this might not be the easiest thing to, to review for everyone. Sorry about.
Yeah, because I'm trying to follow what you're saying and how it's correlated with each ID number. So I'm like, okay, help me out here.
So basically, you know, if you go back to the I-Bank process, say for example, we're at item eight right now. Uh, no, we're at item nine right now. For the I-Bank process.
Okay. Environmental planning documents.
Yeah, we're item nine right now.
And I'm. Right. And the design phase, we're, we're, we're good on that. Still late. Permit phase, we're moving along.
Yeah, permit phase is ending. We're at nine for I-Bank and we're for the, uh, um. Design phase, we are, we're, you know, we're kind of more down at item number 17 for, uh, design. But we can figure out a good way to differentiate this.
All right. Very good. Any laggards here? Anything lagging behind?
No, well, since the last submission, that number nine is lagging behind due to that, uh, we got tripped up on their review, uh. And, and the documents being properly uploaded to them.
Okay. We'll get updated on the next project list. Thank you.
Okay, uh, engineers report, uh, let me get back to here. Asset management plan. I guess I should have discussed this outside this meeting with the, uh, Danell. Did that get uploaded, Danell?
Um, I was not aware that it needs to be uploaded. I know I uploaded all the planning documents so I can get reimbursed.
Okay. Well, yeah, that's during then, then, and then you've done what needs to be done.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so, so sewer service area mapping, we discussed that. Water infrastructure, so, um. Kind of as far as the water main and the, the infrastructure design. So we had been going back and forth with the county for a little bit and I know, um, James had had a discussion with Mike. So, yeah, so plans are, uh, and so basically the best plans, you know, you know, and, and, and we've been going back and forth on. Can we use an, uh, old set of plans in lieu of doing a new survey? Or should we just do a new survey of the area? So basically the best that the county could give us, um. Were a set of, uh, roadway. Plans from 2007, um, which we were certainly anticipating. Something more recent. Um, so. In our opinion, you know, and this is kind of like, some people design. A water main like this, kind of, you know, on what, what, what would be called an aerial, you know, like essentially like the, like the Google aerial, you know. A, 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 a high tech, you know, a, a higher resolution kind of professional version of a Google area. Sometimes you, um, design a water main based on something like that with kind of like next to no ground survey. Um, and some people just do the full blown survey. And some people just do the full-blown survey, and that's kind of up to the amount of risk that the. That is deemed acceptable, you know, the, the, the less detail you have there, the more risk that you take that, you know. The, you know, that when they get to construction, there's gonna be things in a way that wasn't planned, right? But people do it either way, but given that the, that, that survey is from survey. The plans are from 2007, and again, probably not much changed in the last 14 years. But still, that's, we are, are a little hesitant to use that in lieu of doing a survey. So as of now, we're gonna plan to do a survey and we're gonna, so, you know, we got the authorization. From council to, you know, for an agreement, but we're gonna provide a specific agreement with a specific scope and dollar amount to Donnell here in the next couple of days. For that work.
Steve, the only, only, have you, have you made any headway? I know you're looking at the main and the mains, the, the, the main extension or installing the mains is the primary focus, but.
Yeah.
I, I guess one of the things you need to do before you, you look at where a, a 200,000 gallon storage tank might go. It's probably best that you talk with, you, you sit with down with SUEZ to get their feelings and to get, to get their, get their. All right, so, so, so basically, you really do need to meet with SUEZ because you need their input.
Yep, there's. Some knowledge kind of missing on what they really analyzed previously and what has changed since. That, that we really need to get up to date, up to speed about.
Yeah, but the other thing too, Steve, just so you tell everybody, one of your engineers used to work for B S and J?
Yeah, so we have a, one of our water engineers, Marat. He used to work with B S and J and say, for example, when that main was going in, he was out in the field observing that work.
All right, so he has a background, he, he, he's familiar with the SUEZ system, and so that's, that's a benefit for us.
Yep, absolutely, when, when we took that document out a few months ago, you know, he, he was aware of what was going on.
All right, good. I'll, I'll reach out, I'll reach out to John Hilda Brand and see if I can get something going. And I'll, I'll get him connected back with you, Steve or James, and then we'll try to get, get a meeting set up.
Yep, that'd be great.
Any, any questions for Steve before we move on?
I think the same thing applies here for this project list as far as updates and be able to put. So do the same thing uniformly, so we can follow them.
Sure, yep, and, and, and just, that's why I had on one thing, Howie mentioned the, the easement clearing over at pump station one. We're gonna follow up with a follow-up site visit since it's clear now.
All right, that's good, thanks.
You're talking about this pump station one easement assessment where you've got the drawings. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so now it's, okay, good.
It may be a lot clearer once the, since it's cleared.
Yeah, it's a lot of vegetation there.
So we need to provide direction on whether you should do a new survey or not?
Well, it's of our opinion that we should do it, but that's, you know, like I said, for one, has different levels of risk, I guess. And but, yeah, we, we can present the price and position to be made that way, it's, it's not a whole lot of money.
Yeah, go on, you go ahead and do that, Steve, you put that, you get the price together and then we'll decide. My, my initial feeling, and I don't know how you feel, Kristen, but I, I, I agree with Steve, it probably has to be redone.
Yeah.
If it's been since 2007, I think it's important that we get the right. Right survey done here, because a lot of things have changed since that time.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, good. And, and any other questions for the engineer?
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Steve, I appreciate that. All right, moving on to number 13. And make a motion to open to the public for items not on the agenda.
Motion to open up to the public for items not on the agenda?
Second it.
Motion made by Andy Pittsger, seconded by Dave McDermott, roll call. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Jackie, is there anybody from the public that wants to speak?
I guess I have Jesse Palladini.
Jesse, go ahead.
First, I just want to say that, you know, because this took me by surprise. It's very, very, very unfortunate that you are now going to appeal. That frivolous lawsuit that cost township taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars. If not hundreds, I'm kind of surprised that Andy abstained. And I'm wondering why, since he posted just today, why he wholeheartedly supports. A lawsuit against the S C M U A, but I don't really want to talk about that lawsuit. I just think it's really, really reckless and unfortunate. Talk about frivolity, it, it's just really sad, anyway. My comment tonight is directed at Mike Fury. Mike, I have to tell you, I have a complaint that I want to lodge against you. Because I think that your conduct is unbecoming of an S C, of an M U A member. Much less chair and now a council member. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the Vernon M U A has a policy. It has a resolution policy that it adopted against social media posting. And your actions over the last couple of days, particularly in attacking me. Over and over again with false information about the Wallace. Soil Mountain site, and I was on this committee and I failed to do this. And I was on that committee and I failed to do that, all of which is totally bogus. Untruthful, and you know it. I think all of it violates the M U A policy. Which adopted strict rules against posting certain things on social media. Mike, just appalling things you post. You know, Andy has a Facebook page now, Andy Pittsger for Town Council. And I asked a couple of questions yesterday and today, and he was very civil and gracious in responding. And, you know, I told him that I would never be disrespectful on his personal campaign page. But you, as the chairman of the M U A, you are totally violating your policy. And it's disgraceful what you do, and quite frankly, Mike, you could deny it. But quite frankly, I have sufficient evidence to believe that you're the person who created a fake I D. And came on Inside Vernon and for the past two days, just wrote outrageously ridiculous things. About the S C M U A, I'm sorry, about the M U A, and you are the chair. You know, you could deny it if you want. Your conduct is just totally unbecoming and in violation of your own social media policy. And I'm not gonna sit here and call for your resignation, because that would be a moot point. You would, you would never admit to wrongdoing, but I'm gonna ask you. On your own to stop your conduct unbecoming. Of an M U A member, chair, and now a council person. Stop the social media harassing, stop lying about me. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, anybody else?
I do not have anyone else raising their hands.
With that, I'll make, anybody want to make a motion to close to the public?
Motion to close to the public?
Second most.
Motion made by Andy Pittsger, seconded by Dave McDermott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? All right, I'm, I lost my agenda, what's next, I apologize.
Next is number 14, commissioner's comments.
All right, commissioner comments, thank you, Jackie. We'll go to Scott Galway first, Scott?
I didn't, I didn't really have anything additional for tonight. I, I think that it's a good idea that we have the hybrids going forward. It's a good opportunity for people to be flexible and still be able to meet. I, I just saw the email from Donnell about the, the proposal for the, the, from James. Looks pretty good, that'd be great if we can somehow stay on track and have that whole project wrapped up by May of 2022. So looking forward to that, as I think it's really important to the town, but that's all I have for tonight, Mike, thanks.
All right, all right, thank you, Scott. Andy Pittsger?
Real quick, Jackie, you and I spoke about this, but we have to schedule another pipeline walk, walkthrough?
Yes, I have it on my calendar to call the railroad next week to set up a time for early November, once the vegetation has died down.
Okay, very good, and I guess we'll have to make sure that all participants involved in that can do the walkthrough.
Yes, I will send it out to see responses and whoever wants to come, we can make plans for everybody to have the appropriate gear.
Yeah, it's, and I, I will be going on that one again as well, so thank you. That's all I have for public comments today.
Thank you, Andy. Kristen Wheaton?
Thanks for bringing that up, Andy, I was gonna ask as well, we might want to advertise that. Or we might wind up having to advertise that as a public meeting if, if we're all depending on the number of board members in attendance. But I'm interested as well in that pipe walk. I have no further comments this evening, thank you.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Dave McDermott?
I have nothing to add at this time.
All right, thanks, Dave. My next commission, chairman's comments?
Chairman, one question real quick, Kristen, you made a comment and triggered an idea here. Do we want to open this up to the public and let them walk the line with us and see what it's, what these types of things we go through? So that's something we want to consider? Chairman?
I, I would, if you want to make a, you know, open invitation to, to learn about what the M U A, what, what, you know, what it's about. And where it is and how it operates, I, I don't see a problem with that, if, if, if people are interested.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, it's a nice walk through there, but it's also, there's a purpose for it, is inspecting these lines and whatnot. But also for people to understand that here's, here's the learning process of what we do and what it takes. But just a thought, just a quick, sorry, but.
Just, just, just a thought, I, I do have concerns about safety for members of the public going to walk along that line. And I'm not sure how the railroad would feel about that.
That's a good point, I figured it'd entertain the idea, but you bring up a good point.
They would probably not be okay with that.
I don't think they would allow that.
They, they were having a problem with us.
Yeah.
Okay, good point.
Exactly.
It was just an epiphany.
All right, the only comment I have, again, I, I want to thank everybody, this is, the M U A is doing a great job. We're gonna continue working together and getting these projects moving forward. I, everyone's involvement is important. And on the subcommittees, we, we're still keeping, focusing on the subcommittees and, and keeping those projects moving forward, so we can meet these goals. I, like Scott says, I think water to the town center is, is pretty critical. And I'm, I'm glad we're moving forward and getting, moving that ahead and, and we're on pace to possibly get it done by the, by the spring of next year. So with that, that's my only other, only comments for the night. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dave McDermott, seconded by Andy Pittsger. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Anybody opposed? Thanks, everybody, we'll see you next time.
Good night.
Thank you, take care.
Good night, everyone. I shoe again.
Good night.